A couple of here's code.
Greenwood, I was getting my Greenwood.
Light up. Call the board of the special meeting of the Avalon City Council Monday, August 18. Denise, roll call.
Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Sampson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Olson?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall?
Here. And if we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ollie, would you like to lead it, please?
Please place your hand in the heart and follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Joe Sampson will lead us in the invocation.
Lord, please guide us today as we make decisions that will represent the people of Avalon. Please point our decisions in the right direction and help us to make very thoughtful and careful decisions today in your name. Amen.
Thank you very much, Joe.
Are we going over new ones or going over the old ones?
Are there any announcements?
I want to just clarify, Ben, what we put in front of them was the two papers.
Sure, so we've got a couple of things in front of you here, just on that topic that the Mayor Pro Tem was bringing up. You have two things. You've got one piece of paper that says Goals Phase One. And these are the goals that were put together at the last goal session, and these are going to be before you tomorrow night. And the thought was you would review and approve them. So these are parked, if you will, and we're not going to be talking about these tonight because the decision was we already, we decided on these and those will be approved tomorrow night. Now, as part of that discussion tomorrow night, and you probably saw this from my staff report, you might need to flesh out a couple of these a little bit more, just to kind of make them more specific and so that we can... The whole idea is I don't want to set us up for failure, right? I want you guys to be as direct with us as you can possibly be so that we have something that we can actually achieve. You know, it'd be great to have an orange sky, but we all know that we're not going to get an orange sky, so let's, you know, focus on what we can do, I guess is what I'm saying. So that puts us to today, and at the Mayor Pro Tem's suggestion, we brought forth this document, which was from the meeting back in April where we identified a whole bunch of goals, and just at a very, very high level. So if you needed to draw from any of these today to help pick a new goal, this could be a good starting place. I also know of a couple of goals, if you wanted to ask the city manager for any input, I do have a couple of ideas. But again, you guys are the policymakers, of course, and so that's why and what we're doing. So, Mayor, with that, how would you like to start out today?
Well, I would like to start out by looking at the goals for Phase One just one more time.
Okay.
And I'm referring to you, Joe, on this one, the goals which, you know, we briefly touched on in the arcade. About Pebley Beach Road is one of our goals. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, just a little bit. I'm having my doubts about putting this forward just because it's out of the city limits. It's not actually, we don't actually own Pebley Beach Road, and I have some major concerns because if we go ahead and fix this road up, then the island company might just take it back again. And I think they are planning on doing some building out at Pebley Beach in the future, in the near future, possibly. I mean, this is something that's been relayed to me firsthand, and I really hate to spend the public's resources on this if we aren't going to benefit from it. Now, we still have a definitely factor about safety out there that I think needs to be addressed, but it sure would be nice to get some help from maybe Edison and some of the people that actually commute out there and use that road, and possibly the owner of the road as well. It would be nice to get some input or some backing from them as well. But as far as the public goes, I would like to see the public protected on that road. That's my main thing.
Sure. The only thing I might add on that is that our insurance provider has identified this area as a potential major liability for the city and has some very clear requirements of the city for us to enact out there, even though, as you pointed out, it's not our road. We effectively are the one who's controlling it, if you will, and because of that, we do have the liability.
Okay.
So they basically said, hey, you know, since you guys are opening it, closing it, deciding when you can get out there, when you can't get out there, if there was a lawsuit, the city would be the one that somebody would go after. Now, they may go after the island company as well, of course, but we would likely be liable for any injury out there.
Okay. Yeah, I kind of figured that.
Can I just, oh, go ahead. Sorry, just for clarification, and this goes back years, and this goes back even before you, but if you do know, can, or maybe even only, I was sort of was under the impression that the island company had given the road to the city, and during the geological study, that's when they found, during the process of potentially transferring the road over, that's when they found the rock hazards and the hillside hazards. But is it the intention for that road to become the city's?
The Mayor Pro Tem can chime in here, but it's my understanding that it's an easement that we have. It was not deeded to the city. There's an annual maintenance fee. The island company pays for that road, but it's anemic. It's around 32 grand a year.
Going back in history, there was a plan that was laid out to transfer all the roads from the company to the city because the city has the resources to maintain the roads. Company doesn't do that. And a couple of city managers ago, when they were talking about the future road transfers, they were talking about the landslide that happened, the mudslide that happened on Casino Way, and they were talking about where's that and what stability of that hillside? And it's like, if it rains, it'll fall down. And then he said, well, why don't you also look at Pebley Beach Road? And that's where they did the engineers' report, and it came back and saying, it's not a very safe road because rocks will fall down. And that's when the company closed the road, and then we came up with the insurance plan to open it back up, and we have an encroachment permit, or an easement.
It's an easement, from what I understand.
It goes upside the hill.
Yeah.
And so we get to maintain part of it, they get to maintain part of it.
Right.
We own out to Avalon Point, and they still own...
Ring Rock.
Ring Rock.
Ring Rock.
I don't know. The way this goal's written, though, this is basically planning and find out what's going to cost us to do to get this stuff done, and also cover the insurance requirements. I'm not sure that's not a good goal. I mean, it's not going to extend the walkway from Ring Rock, from Avalon Point to Pebley, but it will do the planning to figure out what it costs us to get there and see if there's any resources available outside of Argyle Cothers to pay for this. So I think it's an overall goal, and I think it won't cost us that much to get it done.
It's a good goal.
Okay.
But perhaps, go ahead.
I just want to ask a question. One of the questions was brought up that we shut the roads down. I don't remember us recalling that the city ever shut the road down. It's always been the island company's always shut the road down.
Now it's our responsibility.
Yeah.
When there's rains and whatnot.
But they still shut it down. They go down and put the gate, and they put the lock on.
Well, actually...
And I don't know if that was any direction from the city, or is that still under there?
I believe that's as part of this transfer that he's speaking of. Since I've been here, we actually have a city procedure wherein any city department can make a determination it's unsafe and can go down there and shut it.
But back to my question again, I think it's been the island company's done that. I don't think the city has done it.
The last couple of times, I know it's been the fire department.
The fire department?
Yeah.
So with regard to the goal, though, I think one of the things was it was in the boardwalk along the Oceanside. I think maybe more what we're looking for is just the safety of the thing and maybe not going into that phase of beautification as well? Or do we want to beautify it as well as make it safe? Because there's a big difference in cost. I mean, one thing to make it safe and shore it up, and then the others.
I think I would make the argument, and again, you guys are the policymakers, but we all know we've got people walking out there, and I think that's kind of goes with making it safer. If you know that people are walking out there, it's not as if they're going to stop walking out there. We've got people walking out to Lover's Cove, and then they decide they want to go out to the Nickel or wherever.
Okay.
Well, I think the key thing is just develop a comprehensive plan for improvements that we'll include. And so we're developing the plan, we're not funding the plan at this time. Remember, we're developing, what the fencing plan is going to be, what the walkway plans would be, and as we find possible the resources for the walkway and the boardwalk and the railing, you know, we can fund it that time. But this time, I don't think we have the resources to...
The other thing I like about this goal is that this is something that, like, I feel we could actually do this. I feel that this is, you know...
Smart goal.
This one feels...
Is it tangible?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent. I'm glad that you gave me that input and direction. But yeah, that sounds good. I like the casualness of the road, but it just needs, it just needs to be safer. We are losing the walkway, and Dennis Jitch and I have talked about it, and we've researched it a bit. So if we can get some backing to do the work out there, I would still support it. Maybe not to the extent that we were originally talking about, but absolutely to make it safer for pedestrians, bikers, golf carts, anybody who goes out there that has a vehicle that is not enclosed, is at risk of getting a rock in the head or maybe getting struck by a vehicle. So I think we should go ahead with it at that. But I sure would like to get some support from, a little more support from the island company, maybe even Edison, or some of the vehicles that go back and forth on that road that rip it up a bit.
Make it a toll road.
Yeah.
Or even the quarry, because that's some support from them. Get some big rocks, because that seems like it's going to take, to me, putting rocks in front of that road to stabilize it, to backfill it, to make it... Because if you go from the sea and look that way, it's so undermined on that road, it's unbelievable.
We're going to need help from the rock quarry, for sure. Colony Pacific's...
If you look from seaward side in, it's horrendous.
Colony Pacific would be key to our...
From what I see.
Yep. I see, good point. Excellent.
And then I just have another question. At some point with each of these goals, like, these have like three or four little ticks underneath them or one, we will be dissecting these goals more to add more of the nuts and bolts to reaching the goal, is that true?
Yeah, I think that, and that's kind of a little bit, what we're looking for tomorrow night is some minutia, if you will, to help us make them measurable. So taking, for example, the Pebley Beach Road one, again. So like we talked about, we're going to develop a comprehensive plan for the improvements. And these improvements are going to include the fencing and the boardwalk, and we're going to fill the potholes, and then we're going to have funds budgeted in this fiscal year. So that, to me, kind of lays out, I think, what we need to do. If I look at others of these, okay, so let's jump to number six, comprehensive transportation review. We need probably some more bullet points and some sub-bullet points so that we know exactly what it is we should be working on. And so initially, the direction that I heard from you guys was put these on the meeting tomorrow night, and you guys would embellish them as you saw fit and adopt them. And then today, we were just going to fill out our goals with any other priorities that we have. However, your time is your time, and if you want to spend time, I mean, I don't, it's at your discretion how you want to proceed.
Could I add one little thing to the Pebley Beach Road?
Yeah.
Under the filling of the potholes?
Mm-hmm.
Would you put a little dot to talk to our coastal commissioner friends to get an ongoing maintenance permit?
That's a good bullet point to add.
What is that, ongoing maintenance permit?
You can get ongoing maintenance permits from the coastal commission so that you can go in and fix things.
We have, or we're, have we been approved for the emergency part of it, but they will not give us an ongoing one that just will go on and on and on. We have applied for that, and it was denied. Isn't that correct, Ben?
You know, I don't know that. I was going to follow up. I know that we have the emergency permits like you're talking about, but I, so that effort was already attempted and it failed.
That's what I recall, just recently.
So like, the pothole that was out, I would call it quite a bit more than a pothole that was out there last week?
The sinkhole?
The sinkhole is more like it. That would be considered an emergency repair?
Right.
Okay.
And there's some timeline after an emergent, like, after a big storm...
Three days, I think.
Yeah, happens. We have like 72 hours or something to repair.
Mm-hmm.
So we just have to record the heavy surges?
Yes.
It's an ongoing clock.
So let me ask another question. Like, something like Pebley Beach Road, that is something that typically we wouldn't say we're going to go out and find a grant for. This would be something we would be budgeting in-house?
We would, I think with everything, if a grant is possible, we want to try to pursue it, but yeah, this would likely be general fund money or, yeah.
Okay. Okay. And then like for number two, achieve the balanced city budget, and also then align with number five, which is infrastructure. So we're drafting and implementing development fees and things like that there, but then that also, are there other kinds of fees that would go into number two, or basically number five kind of fit into number two? Because if we have the fees, we also then have, that's part of the balanced budget as well, right? So those are kind of, they're not the same, but they're...
I think the development fees are capital fees. I think the operational fees that are ongoing are the ones that need to be tweaked so that we get, the fund balances out of a negative area, get, so that we pay for the cost of providing those services.
So number five, then would be operational fees?
No, number five's capital fees.
Those are capital, is operational fees. Okay, cool. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, then, do we want to proceed with the additional ones then and leave the rest of those till tomorrow, one through six?
I'm leaving.
Okay? Sure. You're going to let us all pick a goal again as we go in around the room?
I don't, whatever works best for you.
Well, you know what? I would like to hear one of your goals.
Okay. Well, this might seem like it's kind of out there, but one thing that has struck me about Avalon is there is a, there's a lack of recreational space. We have some real challenges in this area, and I think you could look at many different areas, but one pet project, and this is just, this is probably not the one that you're thinking I'm going to go to, but I'm going to go there. One pet project I would love to be turned loose upon is the amphitheater at the front of town. And there's a private citizen who lives down there who has come forward that would like to contribute a quarter million dollars to sprucing that area up. And the island company is interested in leasing the land to the city so that we could do things like little acoustic concerts and...
Everything.
Performances and, you know, Mozart in the Park, whatever you want to call it. So I would, I would love to be able to put together a proposal and say, you know, this is what we think we could do, this is what it's going to require. You probably have to do it in phases because, as you guys know, that area's got kind of like three or four little steps. And I think the top steps are probably not as solid as some of the lower steps, and so, and then you have to work with the people that live around there and the business owners. But I think it's, I mean, it obviously was a focal point years and years ago. I wasn't here when that was around, but I would have loved to experienced it. With projects like the Conservancy's proposed headquarters going there and other changes, I think it'd be really neat to come into town and have a spot like that. So that'd be an example. You know, if we wanted to make that a goal, I would, at your direction, pursue a proposal, trying to move forward. Just last week, I talked to Randy Harrell, and I said, you know, if the council decides to, I could be coming back to you with this. What do you think? He said, well, we've said before, we're interested, give us a proposal, and let's see what is involved.
Worthy, certainly.
I think the first thing that came to my mind, which is exciting, is when we met with Supervisor Don Knobby's office, when they initially came over after the election, and we're talking about all these, the different fundings that were available, such as concerts in the park and different, you know, recreational things, and this is a perfect venue for us to go after some of that sponsorship, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's a really neat spot. I mean, it's kind of like a...
We all know.
Yeah.
What do you think? Worthy? Sure.
Yeah, I mean, if you've got someone who's throwing a quarter million, why not?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
If you're going to go at it already with a little bit of funding, that's great.
Yeah, now, let's see if this guy's serious. I mean, he, this is, you know, but I think he is, and he would probably want some conditions in return. This guy's a business owner, and he'd said, you know, hey, if I contributed a quarter million dollars, I would expect, he owns a pizza company in Newport Beach. He'd say, he said something like, you know, could we have a condition where if you have an event, I was allowed to have pizza for sale as part of it? And I said, well, I think we could probably work out something like that, you know.
He could rent our little tents.
That quarter million would probably cover the facility to serve the pizza from.
Well, I made it clear that anything, that that money would be used to improve the area, it wouldn't be to buy anything for his business, and that it would be solely, because you're going to have to do things like provide some power, make some access to that area. And I told him also, we would have to put very strict conditions on it. Like, you might want to say that you don't want people, everybody driving over there and parking right there. That's going to be a cluster.
It's a walk in the park.
A valid parking opportunity.
Well, right. You could do something like that. I think you absolutely could.
Now, do we need to put in money in our budget to look at preliminary plans, or do you...
It would just be staff overhead, like Dennis Jitch working with, you know, to review. We would take that money. We would need an engineering study to tell us how solid those things are, what improvements need to be made. We would need to work with Edison about bringing over appropriate power and so forth, but yeah, it would be largely money that we could absorb, I guess is what I'm saying. The staff would do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Want to throw it on the list?
Okay.
Great idea.
Awesome.
I like it.
That's going to be fun.
Can I just go back to our Phase One? Ben, you and I talked about this earlier today. I guess at some point, I didn't realize that the comprehensive transportation review actually made it onto the Phase One list.
Yeah, yeah.
So I, just for everyone else's benefit, I met with Ben earlier today and had started throwing together a lot of my notes since the transportation was kind of one of my pet projects I wanted to work on, and I misunderstood tonight's meeting for tomorrow's. I thought our study session was tomorrow at 4:30, whereas we're having a training tomorrow. So I didn't have an opportunity to put all that together, but in meeting with Jordan and in kind of just, you know, brainstorming some of my ideas, the transportation review is fairly extensive, and I was hoping that maybe we could turn that goal before we really solidify it as a goal, that maybe we could make that a study session, a separate study session.
Yes.
And we could, I could hear what some other of the council's goals would be as far as transportation. So I don't, I don't know if it's fair to leave that as a blanket goal number six, or if maybe we could, if you're interested, maybe we could find some time to do a study session on transportation.
I'd leave it there and let us do the study session after we adopt it, because that would give us some impetus to do it.
Okay.
Otherwise, it'd get backgrounded.
Yeah, so the first step would be the study session.
Yeah. Okay, great.
Okay, yeah.
No, because there's, yeah, there is so much involved with that.
I have several pages of brainstormed notes...
Yeah, yeah.
...which led me to believe that, oh my gosh, this is so much bigger.
Yes. No, it truly is. Excellent.
And by then, we'll have the benefit of the bond study.
Yes.
Good foresight.
Okay, who else has one? Joe, do you have another, another goal you would like to throw out here?
No, you can go to somebody else until I think about that.
Mr. Olson, do you have one in mind?
Well, it's a terribly ugly subject, but number six on the new list, which is the cease and desist order.
Yep. Good.
Do what we can do to get that done.
So that was yours.
Okay, so the goal would be...
The ultimate goal is get rid of it.
Okay.
Because we have to do a whole bunch of stuff by 2016, right? Is it 2016?
Right.
Yeah, so I'm assuming we're definitely work, that's kind of one of those in progress that we're never, we're not going to falter.
Well, but I think we also, I think we need to think about a different tact.
Okay.
I think we need to work with the staff and let the, get the staff on our side to see all this good stuff that we have been doing, and some of the stuff in the cease and desist is rather ominous. No discharges in a year, and we just had a discharge because we had a rainstorm.
Right.
You know, on the wet days, there's not a lot of way you're getting rid of it until we put a stormwater diverter in the main channel. You know, when it rains like that, you're going to have stuff coming down the channel, and a lot of that's animal waste and stuff like that, which is going to increase the bacterial count. And I think we've got to work with them to come up with some reasonable goals. I mean, they've given us the really harshest, how you got to get here, goals, and we've got to achieve the goals that we can. We're going to have to work with staff and say, you know, we busted our butt on this. Unless we ban all deer, foxes, cats, dogs, pigeons, seagulls from Avalon, you know, it's not going to happen.
Okay.
Yes.
So work with the Water Resource Board staff to discuss progress and the end game, basically, right? Okay? Yeah, always talked about this one a bit, so I know this is near and dear doing.
Who, if I may ask, is that current, this is the kind of cease and desist concept? Have you, have you given that to any staff person, or is that your baby, or...
Basically, almost everybody has a role in it. Denise is one of the primary people that heads it up, along with Dennis Jitch.
Okay.
But the entire Public Works Department is basically focused on that, so is Environment Strategies.
Harbor Department.
Harbor Department, City Attorney's Office, I mean, really, everybody's kind of...
And part of that, I remember, was an...
Planning Department.
Yeah, was an educational component. And I asked for this a long time ago, and it's like, well, is it, what could we do in-house instead of having to pay everybody else to do it? And you were saying that the educational component sounded like something we could grapple, which would, which is good.
Yeah.
Would you consider part of that educational goal, like the comprehensive upgrade or reviews that Jordan puts together that talks about like fat soils and grease and what...
That's part of it, or, for example, we're working on a flyer to go out to all the boaters talking about harbor discharge. And we're, as part of our best management practices, we've designated a washdown area, and there are certain steps that you can do, a legal washdown versus an illegal washdown. And so we're developing a flyer to distribute so that people know that. And that area is over by the fuel, excuse me, the pump-out station area, and it's been determined that there's better circulation in the channel over there, and there's a certain procedure that you're supposed to use to wash down your boat, to do it in the most, the less impactful manner, right? Denise, feel free to...
No, you do.
I'm bunkling this one up pretty much here, but, so that would be an example of education that we are doing currently in-house. And this is directly related to things you've read in the paper and concerns from stakeholders like John King and others, and...
Right, right. And there's even like a school component for children and that kind of thing, too, which seems like we've got the expertise in-house to play with that and...
Yeah.
Okay. Rich, did you have one, or...
Yeah, just, you know, the same one that I've been harping on for a couple of years now, and everybody's been harping on the last 20 years or more, was the rec building.
Community center.
Facility, community center type deal. I mean, I don't know how realistic, you know, we don't have the property yet. That seems to be the biggest holdup of anything, trying to figure out how we can get some property to do it. But I think once we ever get it, if we're able to get it, I think it'll, I think it But I think once we ever get it, if we're able to get it, I think it'll, I think it would be a worthwhile thing to have.
Councilmember Hernandez, would this include a pool as well?
I was just directly, just thinking about the rec building.
Okay.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I think the pool would be great.
It's a community center.
Just a community center with big downstairs. Versatile thing. You have kitchen, if facility, so people can rent it out for whatever they need to do, or the dance hall in it. Upstairs could be whatever you need to do on it. You could have, you know, workout things up there for people to use and make it a two-story building. And I think you could, you'll find that in a few years down the line, and I think it'll pay for itself with the use and the people using it all the time. There's no place for people to go to have a park. Can't afford to casino at $3,000 or $10,000 to do it. People would surely pay money to do that. If you could make a big enough rec center for everybody to go and kids to go there after school and do stuff. We're lacking stuff for the kids to do and places for them to go. For example, the Joe Machado Field is locked up. I mean, it would be nice somewhere along the line if we were able to open it up a couple hours a day. Whoever wants to go in there and use it without, unless, unless somebody's permitted to use it, then they would have priority over it. But the kids right now have nowhere to go. Everything, the school's locked up. Joe Machado Field's locked up. The Field of Dreams is not in very good condition to do anything. It would be nice if we could incorporate all that and do some stuff with the kids in town. They're kind of getting squeezed out of everything. Yeah, the skate parks coming along. We gotta watch out for those little guys. We gotta help them out.
Is the Joe, is the Field of Dreams here, is this, is that a possible place that we could put this recreation, recreation center? I mean, that's a piece of land, isn't it?
But it's not ours.
It's not ours.
It's leased right now.
It's leased right now.
And I know the pool people are real curious. They say they've been promised that, but I don't know what it, I know you talked with Kathleen, I believe, today, and I chatted with her too. And then she said about, I said, I said, securing the land for the placement of the pool is someday just gonna be a yea or nay, a commitment or a non-commitment from the island company, I would think. Until that, we're not building the pool.
We don't have the land.
Yeah, the city, yeah. And it's not the city's plan to build the pool. It's for the the Booster Club and their fundraising efforts to build the pool. I never thought it was our responsibility, our goal to build the pool. But joint use of that property perhaps, once that land was given. So she asked, well, could this, is the pool a goal? And I said, the pool, the pool isn't a goal of ours. The helping to secure the land so you can continue on with the pool is perhaps the goal.
Okay.
You know?
Well, that's, I think, so going back to what Councilmember Hernandez was talking about, because I wanna make sure that, I heard, actually, I heard two different goals in what he was speaking of. I heard one about a community center, but then I also heard something
Additional.
about, you know, maybe modifying the use of Joe Machado such that there was an open time. And I understand this pretty well. I mean, I've got kids here and when we wanna play soccer, we often end up going to Descanso Beach just because, I mean, I know I can go over there with a ball and it's open.
Right, right.
So Richard, are you proposing? I'm sorry, I'll leave it. It may cut you off.
I didn't mean to cut you off. You go first.
Like how they have open gym?
Well, yeah, just pick a, you know, random times you have, from one to three. Unless somebody has a permit to use the field, then they have the right to use the field because they're paying for it.
I know what you mean.
But if it's like right downtime right now, between, just say hypothetically from 10 to 1, Joe Machado Field's open.
Pick-up games or whatever.
They go, kick the ball. People could go in and do what they need to do. I mean, it's just somewhere the kids could go. They're getting locked out everywhere they go. They're getting locked out.
Does there actually have to be supervision up there?
That would be, I would think if we were to open it for something like that, I'm not really sure.
I think we, I think these are all things we could work towards. I think that, you know, I think, that's a huge issue in this town. It's shocking to me. Well, no, it's not shocking now that venue, it's just land, land is, well, land is tight, right? But you're right, there's nowhere to go. If you wanna just mess around with a football or a baseball or, unless you're in your driveway or something, or, you know.
Well, and that's...
You're dealing with a long driveway.
Yeah, that's true. Not even my driveway, but yeah.
In that same vein, I think one of the things about Joe Machado, and I heard a couple people commenting on how a couple of our football games aren't gonna be taking place because we're gonna do some sodding or seeding during the football season. Why don't we go back, if we're spending $65,000 or $70,000 in water, why don't we go back, explore the idea of turfing that field? To make it available on our year-round basis so you don't have the downtimes.
We did start to look into that and we quickly stopped when we started getting the estimates. They were outrageous.
Really? Define outrageous.
Six or $700,000.
Yeah.
That might be a noble goal, and I think there's resources out there for us.
Grant opportunities and so forth.
Grant opportunities.
At one time, when we were doing this prior, way back, we had people come up to do that, and they quoted us, this is years back, to do the Joe Machado Field, the high school, and the Field of Dreams down there for 1.2 million. But the guy also had, with his program that he presented to us, is he had contacts to get
Recycled.
To get, no, no, not to use of, just to get the grants.
Funding.
Help funding for it. He said, I will also help you get grants for this because I'll know I'll get paid. So this is why my company does this. And I don't know if we looked into that, and I think I mentioned it to you.
You did, you have mentioned this before, and we could, we could...
I mean, this company was really, really on it, but this was probably 10, 15 years ago, not further.
Don's still got money to throw things for next two more years.
That's true.
He likes us.
He does.
I mean, this guy said they're out there. Well, this was a few years back when the money was plenty.
And I wonder, in the professional leagues, how often they redo their fields? Because they probably redo them often, and I had heard there that maybe you can get used stuff from football stadiums and things like that too. Stuff that's not recycled, but not destroyed. Because I'm sure they replace those pretty regularly. Just another way to, something to look into.
The Redskins field will probably be available.
Yeah. But they, but those things were guaranteed at that time for 10 years.
10 years.
When we did it. And actually, the cost for all that wasn't bad at that time. It's the vacuum that cleans it up was one of the big costs of everything. It was like $30,000, $40,000 to get that. Because of the different stuff that gets on the field, you mean, you get scab, whatever, you get all that stuff. It needs to be watered still. It needs to be things, we looked into it pretty extensively. And there's certain things, but the big vacuum to clean it, which it has to have, was a big expense.
Wow.
For that. And not to build a place to have it stored, and everything else came along with that. But it'd be a great idea for all the different programs that are going around here, if it was all feasible. But, you know, the way the cost is now, I can understand.
So we've got, it sounds like two goals here, one on the community center and one on Joe Machado Field. Do we wanna kind of flush those two out a little bit?
And while we're flushing, with saltwater, the it was even a dilemma when I, when I worked for the city is, what comes first, the chicken or the egg in terms of recreational activities? And sometimes I'm not so convinced we just need a building because we have beachfront. Now, like, for example, they're finding, they're using the water for the water polo. I think some of the facilities, and if we think outside the box a little bit, I would think we would say, what other, and I, so I'm kind of recommending an advisory committee along these lines to look at between seniors and everybody in town, what other kinds of activities do they really want? And do they really participate? I mean, if you, you know, if you throw a class and two kids show up, or two seniors, is it really worth the expense and the time and the whatever? Does that justify a building? You know, so I'm a little concerned about the numbers. We have 770 kids in the school, 740, something like that. And the bigger activities are covered, the football, baseball, blah, blah, blah. But now when you're fine tuning, and we do have access to a gym, and we do have outside basketball courts, that if we, let's start organizing activities around what we do have and see where the need ends up being, because I hate to build a building and nobody comes. You know, so, so I guess expand, because you don't build a building and then think of what we're gonna create inside. It needs to kind of go the other way as well, a little bit more. So I don't know.
The proverbial needs assessment.
Exactly. And I think if you do that in an advisory capacity, I mean, the staff have some good ideas already. I know Dave, they're all court, they're all creative, but maybe we're missing something, you know, our seniors, number one, another group.
Seniors, arts, arts and crafts, maybe gaming.
Besides just the biggest.
A sound studio, you know, possible sound studio. As you know, we, we have a lot of artists in this town and there's really nowhere for them to play without, you know, blowing out the neighbors. So, I mean, those kinds of things are really important.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
It's a good idea.
So I don't know if you do that goal separate, or you just throw it in with the, the community center thing, if you think that might be a way to help us to go towards our goal of a community center.
Well, I think that's a good goal. And I think that on its own, you know, conducting a comprehensive recreational needs assessment. Because you're right, then that's gonna, you're gonna see what, how much support out there, and I'm not saying that there's not a lot. Is there for the pool? And how much is there for, you know, what are the?
Right, right. Well, and people are gonna say yes. They're gonna say, oh yeah, we need a pool. You know, until you maybe tell them what it costs. But yeah, we need a pool, or yes, we needed this.
But perhaps if we had them, you know, doing a needs assessment where they actually rank and identify what those things are, then they might say, you know, that might come in at the, and it might come in at number one, I don't know. It's just whatever, you know.
Exactly.
Can I also just make the recommendation that Ben, if you could connect, or however we wanna do this, if you could connect with Cal Parsons, and I can give you his contact details offline. Because Cal was tasked from the last city council who spent an, just an unbelievable amount of time and energy into looking at community centers and costs. And he traveled around the country looking at different community centers. He brought several proposals to the table. And he will circumnavigate a lot of that work, and he's already done it. So I would just like to encourage you to
Right.
reach out to him first before we reinvent the wheel that...
No, perfect, excellent, excellent.
For being coming around for a while.
Yeah.
And he had some great ideas. And he's been to a lot of places that have the structures that have already been built in different areas.
Yeah.
Equal to the art size of towns.
Yeah, plans and specs and all that.
So just to beat this to absolute death, let's see. So I guess, was we ever that, that, are we still on for the needs assessment? Is that still being identified as a goal, or are we, are?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, and parallel is, 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 because if a needs assessment is taken through your six months, I think parallel to that would be creating some other activities and see what the turnout be. You know, utilizing, for example, opening up Joe Machado, see what's up there. You know, I don't know how, and maybe just an update from recreation, the smash ball, or whatever it's being called that they're playing up.
Pickleball?
Pickleball.
Yeah.
You know, what are the numbers to that, you know? Just to, because I believe we send staff to participate in those, you know, as supervisors. And, you know, we need to look at, is that many we'll spend? If there's two people picklein' and we spend, spend somebody $25 an hour, is that really worth it? You know?
You're one of the Picklesees.
Yes, exactly. You know, so...
Focus. Okay, sorry.
Sheesh, you can't be too serious.
Okay, so, so you got it? And we, is it still beat to death? Are we good?
Um, I think I...
I have no idea what the goal really is now. If we can come back around and restate that, that'd be great.
Um, okay, so conducting a needs assessment to determine the recreational landscape, if you will. Consulting with Cal Parsons and others who were involved in the effort prior.
Excuse me, and be sure on recreation is, is the arts too, because that was brilliant. And that was very important.
Okay.
It's tied to Avalon Bowl.
It does. Getting an evaluation from staff of existing recreation programs, those that are well utilized and those that are not.
Yeah, just to, yeah.
That's one goal, I think. I think.
Well, that's just a day's project. That's not like a, that's not like a build a road or fix the...
Well, it's a, it's a goal to figure out what, what you're, what you should be putting your efforts towards, right? So that, that's your goal. You're trying to, you're trying to thoughtfully decide what you should be plunging yourself into. Like, like you said, I mean, it may be, maybe recreation building is very needed, and it likely is. Maybe pickleball is not. I don't know.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, because that would be also doing an assessment of the public facilities and, you know, inventory of everything we have to use.
Bring Joe Machado Field hours into this goal, right?
Yeah, or can we use the Outlook place? Or can, you know, when can we realistically use the school gym? Can we ever use the school ball field? You know, beach activity, because there's a lot of, you know, the conserv, you know, oh, this building, the inside of here, the outside of there, the conservancy building up at the
Interpretive Center.
Interpretive Center, which is available to us too. So we have a lot of, I think we have a lot of, and Tremontal. You know, so we still have a lot of places that we can do things. So I don't think the building should be keeping us from doing stuff.
I like that.
Yeah. Bring all those together.
Sounds like a lot.
Yeah, make, yeah, make it a big package.
We got the museum, and then we have the new conservancy building.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're gonna call that kind of the recreation goal, right? So I'm gonna just try to...
That's a good title.
Denise, this is gonna be one we're gonna have to work on here to... And this will come back to you again, I think, to, I mean, I'm just thinking of the sequence. You'll see it and then you can adopt it. And if you need to tweak it at that time, right, would that be, kind of like what we're doing with the Phase One goals?
Yes, yes.
So these are the Phase Two goals, okay? Okay.
Did you have one, Cindy?
I do. On our brainstorming session, we had goal number seven, which is a visitor-friendly mole. By April 2016, improve the safety, cleanliness, transportation options, interface and infrastructure of the Cabrillo Mole. Provide a mole greeter. So I wanna take the mole as a goal. And I would like a comprehensive plan for replacing or a major reconstruction of the mole. And I wanna make that a priority, not just to look at what we could do, but actually to start working on that. We have grant money available. I already know that we're in discussions with Catalina Express, for example, and I know there's additional funding resources that we are looking to go after. So what I'm asking for from our council is to agree to say this is an important goal, and we want city staff to spend time and effort in getting a more friendly goal.
And included in that, another work-study session, because I would like us to be involved in in, or community and put in what could possibly be out there. You know, I mean, I know Ben might have his ideas of what goes out there. But, you know, I think we may say, you know, for example, does the Chamber of Commerce go out there, or do we put here there, or do we have a lot of retail, or? And I think there was a design of, was there a redesign of the mole a long time ago with a lot of retail and stuff? Okay, and I don't know where I heard that. Might have dreamt it, but...
I haven't come across one of them, so I don't know.
Okay, okay. But...
But the original, where those taxi cabs were supposed to be out there. And one of the original designs for the mole when they were doing that.
Oh, huh.
That's where the offices were supposed to be at one time.
Oh, the taxi cab office? Oh, yeah. Instead of the temporary one that's on Crescent Street, yes?
Yep. But it was all different designs. They've had a couple that I saw.
Yeah, well, some of us don't think they even need a little place for that they can dispatch out of their home. But anyway, that's just, okay.
That's for the tours in downtown, not for the cabs.
Oh, okay, okay.
Anyway.
Does that seem clear?
That's a great one.
That's pretty.
The mole goal.
Great, the mole goal.
The mole goal.
The mole goal.
Yeah.
Yeah. And of course, we have grant money that is available for that. We just got an email, I think from Audrey today, or yesterday, saying that that had been officially approved and that there's, right, 2.4 million that we can start drawing down from immediately.
But how much do we have to throw into the pot?
50% matching, I think, is what it is.
So it's not really money from heaven?
That's true. It's not money from heaven. That's true.
But we also know that there is some serious issues with the infrastructure of the mole as it is, so it isn't something that we just wanna go make it look pretty.
Right, exactly.
And I reminded the mole was designed for the steamer, which hasn't been here for a few years.
Well, it's, it'll take care of that.
Yeah, the functionality of it, absolutely.
Well, and then interesting in that whole concept, and I guess this is where maybe we talk about it in terms of policy, because yeah, are we gonna design it so that a cruise ship can pull up alongside? Are we gonna design it so that that other thing goes there? Are we designing it with it not there, or with the thing that at a later date it could be added on? I mean...
I think that any, anytime, any look at the mole should probably have some type of cruise ship element to it. You know, as a minimum, let's say, you know, there's a way to configure a seawalk or something. I mean, I think that we would, we would be silly to embark on a major redesign and just pretend that we don't have cruise ships coming here. There should be some type of component to that. I don't know exactly what that is, but I think that we would wanna at least talk about that.
Right, okay.
Maybe they're not interested. Maybe the cruise ships would say, hey, you know, that's fine, leave us out of this thing. I don't know. But they could also bring money to that discussion, so I...
Okay. Is that, it's?
General fund. Not enterprise fund.
Right, okay, okay.
It's not a pledge from the industry.
Okay. I'm not sure what we wanna call this, but organizational and staff development. I know we talk about, you know, parts of that, you know, number one probably starts with the classification study. You know, making sure we have the right people and the right jobs doing the right thing. That whole area of accountability. Ongoing training and physical and mental training as, as needed. You know, I mean, there's programs to reduce our insurance if we, you know, if, I know the island company used to have that program when, if you went to the gym or they knew they had a place where people could exercise, it reduced their, their workers' comp.
A wellness program.
A wellness program.
That's great.
So that whole, and I don't, I get, when I say risk management, it's, it's, I guess there's different kinds of risk management, but I guess I'm talking about managing the risk of our employees, you know, as being, and that sounds like a big job for Ben, but I mean...
Well, this is great. I mean, we wanna do this. I mean, right, making sure that we're...
That's probably what your job is anyway, but there's, but there's components that probably need to be worked on to be included in your job.
Having the council, if the council decides this is a... Having the council, if, if the council decides this is a priority, then that would also mean that we would be spending some money in this area, because it is gonna require an investment to, to provide this type of thing, but it's good, it'll, it will pay off. Having ongoing training will ensure that you have the right person and the right job and having a wellness program will probably lower your workers' compensation, um, portfolio. Um, so, yeah, that's terrific.
Just kind of the, there's probably a little more to that.
It's great for morale.
I fully, fully, fully support that. That was one of the goals that I brought up in our initial discussion. Um, I, I think the bullet points that you've got so far are good. Create a wellness program, that's a fairly, to me, that's a fairly easy thing to create. Um, what I think would be good for us is to see, after this class comp studying, you know, you got everybody in the right seats on the bus, um, is to look towards the future. What are the training goals for the staff members? So, for example, I know our interim finance director has got some specific trainings that he's working with the finance department on. I know that in the planning department, I think they've got some training that's happening. So, I would love for you, Ben, to go out and find out who's doing what, what's available, what can we send them to and maybe, um, throw some, some budget money towards that training, but not just as it arises, but looking forward.
To what they need, yeah. Milestones and career ladders and, and all that.
Right, so, I want to make sure that we do what you're saying, Annie, and that is to tell you that this is an important enough goal, because we are only as good as the employees working for us and the education that they have. So, I think it's important.
And that's gonna bring on that happy staff thing that we want, that will be reflected in the entire community.
That's goal number one. That was on our brainstorming as goal number one, so I think you can combine both of those.
Yeah, no, 'cause that makes them happy. I mean, you know, if, if they feel comfortable in their job and they're educated and armed and, and good. And the other thing in that with the, which is department, we haven't really discussed much, is I, the IT development too. I mean, there's, there's the, you know, 'cause I don't know where we're gonna be able to go with IT. I know that, you know, there's a proposal for, for a couple more years of, of IT with, with.
Yeah, well, it would be our recommendation to you, um, if, if you saw this as an important policy, that you would commit a certain portion of your budget every year to IT upgrades, because then you don't get in the situation that we were when I came here, where we were seven or eight years behind and I had to use a Gmail account to send email and that you couldn't get on the internet from like three to six, because you just couldn't get on the internet, that just was.
Right, right.
The way it was.
Yeah, and I don't know if we'll ever have the in-house keep, like, we're talking about the social media plan that their policy they're working on. Okay, so now we get this thing and then how do we keep it going? I mean, do, you know, do we have staff in-house that can do that or is that gonna be, or well, that's, or do we, if we have the staff, yes, then how do we get them trained to make sure that they can upgrade or is that something that we have to go out to do? I'm not sure how we're gonna maintain that social media once we get it, or initiate it even, you know?
Right, two different things, so.
Mm-hmm.
But, but, but related, um, so, so you need, you need the infrastructure to be able to provide, you know, the type of IT environment that you're talking about, then you need the, the knowledge and the expertise to be able to implement successfully a social media policy and keep it evolving as you. So, I think you're right, I think, I think you can, and this kinda dovetails with what you're talking about, if you designate individuals on staff to assume this type of role, you can ensure that they receive the type of training each year such that they can be up to speed and they can bring back what they need to.
Right, and then they'd be the ones as things were faltering, go, hey, Ben, this is.
Right, yeah, the latest trend is actually this and what you, what you're doing here is outdated and we're gonna move to something like this.
Right, yeah. I know we have limited staff and at some point may, you know, and it is a shame that we're, we're small staff-wise, you know, and I, I know we're really work, gonna be working these folks even more, but, um.
No, I, I, this, this is part of what we should be doing, I, I think that's great.
I mean, and maybe, you know, it's not a goal, but, but really look for it as we're balancing budget. I mean, just as we reserve money to put in a wastewater treatment plan or a something, maybe we say to eventually be able to hire a staff person for other stuff as, as everybody gets bogged down, 'cause the faster we go, the more we do, the more they're gonna have and something's gonna break, I mean, staff is gonna break, you know, so we wanna make sure we have adequate personnel.
And I'll just throw out that, um, I have not thought this through very well, so I'm hoping I don't get tomatoes thrown at me when I leave the building, but the Chamber of Commerce also has a social media person on staff, Amelia Lincoln, who is just out of this world. She's highly, highly trained, she's got a degree in this, this is what her education has been and, I mean, are there any possibilities of potentially partnering and, um, you know, utilizing the skills? She's constantly upgrading her skill, her knowledge base and all of that. I mean, does it, does it make sense for the city to have its own person down the road or does it make sense to sort of partner with where we are already partnered? So, I don't know if that's a possibility, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Oh, great, excellent.
Okay.
So, how many goals we got now?
Three, four.
Four and six is ten?
I've got four.
I have seven.
Oh, oh, from the, from tonight, I've got ten total, but four from just tonight.
Really?
Uh-huh.
I have seven from tonight.
What, what are the seven that you, you're, you're keeping the official record, so let's see what you have and then we can.
Officially, we have seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, wait, yep, okay, so I got that as number five.
Seaside Desis.
Yeah.
Community Center.
Yeah.
We said Turfing, John Michelle was a separate one, so that's four. Five was, um, a recreational needs assessment. I'm just summarizing.
You're good.
Six is the mall, seven is, um, occupational and staff development.
Whoa, good.
So, I, I guess I had number, I had the recreational goal as one big one with the needs assessment, um, the rec center, possibly include Joe Michado Field and looking at what all is available. Is that split into three different goals?
I was just taking Mr. Harvey's lead, yes.
And that's okay, because if we find, we can find bullet points underneath, some might only have one, but others will have definitely more than one.
So, are we okay with what Denise has written down?
Yeah.
Okay, we're okay with that, everybody?
Yeah.
Okay?
Um, I don't know if this is a goal or if it's just, uh, 'cause we've been discussing it a little bit, um. Subsidy programs. I don't know if that's a goal or if that's just, uh, this is an operational thing we need to be concerned with, you know?
No, I, I think that, you know, if you made that a goal, we could, uh, revisit the subsidy programs we offer. And I can tell you, you guys know, I mean, administering the subsidy cards, nightmare, 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 nightmare. We end up, up here at City Hall as being this, uh, police authority where the, the, the last step in the equation, if they, if folks don't have documentation specified in the checklist, then the City Hall person has to vouch for somebody, which is just a horrible spot to be in. It's not where we wanna be, makes the community really upset. Um, so, we've talked about trying to get to a new approach and, uh, one thing I've said, and this is not necessarily the answer, but I was suggesting, uh, hate, this sounds horrible, but like a, a check-in system to establish your residency where you, you know, during that six-month period or whatever, if we, if we decide it's different, you, you come in and you say, yep, I'm here today and come back the next day and whatever, you, you build up your time.
Like your filing for unemployment, checking the EBT.
Yeah, I, I didn't wanna say that example, but that, yeah, that, that same, same approach.
Yeah, well, and, and possibly not daily, but also the thing is for, the, um, if you, if you had people that apply for the subsidy card for the boat and, let's say I move here and first thing I'm gonna do is get an orange book, well, if I'm coming back and forth, in whether, again, be verification with them, with the express or we review them, whatever, 'cause it's in the person's best interest to show that they're here the longest amount of time. It's not like they can throw the books away and tear out the stuff. If they do, it's invalid, you know, so, so, because that plays not only then on the boat, it's on the dialer, or the dialer ride, um.
We, we can make a goal to, to propose a revision to the subsidy program and suggest a new plan.
I don't like being hit up with people either and just saying.
No, it's horrible.
You can vouch for me, Annie, 'cause, you know, and I'm like, eh, you know, I love ya, but I don't know that I can vouch for ya.
Right.
You know?
It's awkward for everybody.
Yeah, because then, you know, we, we're under scrutiny if we, you know, do that. And, and, and that then plays into the, the vehicle permits. So, it, it answers the question for all of those, um, in which the vehicle thing then will be answered in the transportation stuff. So, so those three subsidies enter into that and maybe more, I, the only ones I know of right now.
So, the goal would be, go ahead, Denise.
What was your third subsidy?
It's the, well, it, you know what, it's the verification process for all of it. So, it includes the, the vehicle permit, the dialer ride and the.
Okay, 'cause dial, dialer ride, you need the blue card in order to buy the.
It's, okay, I wrote it down, it was either art or dialer.
It's art.
It's dialer ride.
It's art, right? Because dialer ride, if you're elderly or disabled, you qualify for dialer ride. I don't think there's any, am I wrong about this? Is there a residency requirement?
No residency.
Okay, so dialer ride, there's no residency, but.
But art is.
Art has a residency, that's how you would get the tickets, you have the blue card, right?
Yeah, so we have one that carries across all three and we're done.
Okay.
I would think.
Well, no, in, 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 okay, so it would still be the same, 'cause you, 'cause you, that's how we dole out the blue card, we just would be devising a new system to dole out the blue card.
Right.
Well, I think in the same review, we review the whole, each of different programs too.
Okay, so help me guys with, with the goal here. Give me, give me the meat here.
Well, I kinda feel like this should fall under the transportation review. That was certainly one of my bullet points for the transportation review.
Okay.
Um, it wasn't on our initial brainstorming goals and I, I, I don't know if we're formulating all of what we had initially into goals for now, um, and I don't know if we're bringing new things to the table. I find that to fall under transportation review of how, who gets subsidies, you know, how are we allocating vehicle permits and the list goes on to four more pages.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I mean, does it, does it need to be a separate goal?
I don't know, well, if, if this can get done quicker, you know, it would be nice, because we're redoing a lease with Catalina Transportation, um, there might be issues with Catalina Express that if we had a definitive answer on how this is done, it would help Dudley when people come in every other day for something. So, that would be nice to kinda solve quickly and then we might find as a result of that, some of that reduces some of these other issues. You know, if things aren't so easy to get, maybe now we got more people walking, less people driving.
Well, I, I think there's, that one goal breaks into two. One of them is the verification process and how do we come up with.
Yes.
The ease of verification. The second one is we look at each of the individual program and see, do we want to do what we're doing? I don't think it's been talked about for a gazillion years, um.
So, put verification on its own goal first.
I think verification is a sub-goal of that goal, of the, of the goal of the subsidy programs.
Okay.
Personally, 'cause it's, the two are related.
I just would like to see that get done quicker. Some of this other stuff is gonna take steady and steady and.
I think the verification thing is just turn to staff and say, how do you wanna do it? I mean, I don't think it's up to us to figure out how to verify somebody. But one of the things you did bring up is the fact that if you do move the island, you will be buying the orange books, you know, you get a couple, collection of orange books, there's a verification.
No, that's what I'm saying, that's, that's an easy way to do it.
And that's, and that's spot on.
Yeah, right.
Denise, am I, are we missing the vote on, so to speak, on the orange books, right? You, you, you have to be in the system. I think the way it works with Catalina Express is they require that you're in the system for thirty days and then you're eligible to buy.
The orange one.
An orange book, right?
One round trip in thirty days, yes.
One, okay, so you've done one, one round trip in thirty days and you can buy an orange book, okay, so you've already been here hopefully for some time. Then you blow through those tickets, right, so that, that could be, in any way, part of your required.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, for six months or whatever.
So, working with Catalina Express to help us with, in the verification process.
Right, right.
And then remind us again, Denise, um, are these rules that we're operating under currently, are these MTA rules or are these our own rules?
Our own rules.
Totally our own? And there's no tie in?
I believe they're only ours.
What's that?
I believe they're only ours.
They give us the money, we spend the money the way we wanna spend.
Okay.
Related to transportation.
There's no requirement from them as to how we administer it, just that we administer it responsibly.
The bus was a response to a request of them that we provide those monies on a more visitor-wide basis, because the dialer ride and the art and the sub, cross-channel subsidy are primarily for the residents, but because visitors to the island also contribute to the tax funds, because they pay the sales tax, so they wanted to expand the reach of that program and so that's how they started subsidizing the, the bus rights.
Oh, okay, but I, I, speaking specifically to the residency requirements, those are our own. Okay.
Okay, good.
Okay, great. I'd like to do this, I mean, this is a thorn in our side every day.
Yes, that's helped Dudley out there too.
Yeah.
Definitely get his input.
Yeah, he's got a couple ideas, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's good to get his, he deals with them every day.
He lives and breathes this, so he's, you know, Dudley more than anybody has some input on this one.
Twenty-minute warning.
What, what?
Twenty-minute warning.
I, I, personally, I think we've established a pretty good list, I'm not sure we wanna add a whole bunch more to it. It doesn't, we get to the council discussion, I mean, I think there'll be another one of these after we get these adopted and these.
No, this, this is great, we got a lot to work with here, I mean, if, if you wanted to, I, I think that's fine.
Let me, let me, may I ask if Denise has a goal?
Uh, we've covered him. Would be the bay water quality and Seaside Desis, so.
Okay.
Infrastructure is tied into the bay water.
And Ben, did you have one?
We had.
Anywhere?
We only got one.
That's all he's got. I, I think I was mostly interested in the transportation. I mean, one of my big focuses, I want to, as a component of that, I want to really focus on the pedestrian friendliness of the community, including, um, don't kill me, considering expanding the pedestrian-only zones, revisiting parking, um, who's allowed to go where. I, I firmly believe that there's a good chunk of town where we should be walking more and when I see somebody, you know, drive down the street to pick up something and drive back, it kills me, you know, I think that, so that's one of, something that's very near and dear to me.
So, that goes into all your transportation stuff on Cindy?
Mm-hmm, definitely.
By, by the way, that we put those little, what I don't know what you call those things on before you hit Crescent or whatever. How often are we gonna have to, to replace those suckers? Man, people are killing them.
They seem to be working pretty good.
I think they work, but, but who's driving over them? I think they work, but, but who's driving over them?
The only thing it's doing right now is deterring the golf cart rental. That's the only purpose they're serving.
So the big worker truck, the worker trucks are going right around them.
If I could, and this is not really part of the session, but just, just to give you an update on that, so, we had this great idea, we went down there and slammed in all these delineators, and yes, they do keep out the rental golf carts to a degree, I have seen a couple come through anyway, but most of them stay out. But what I didn't realize is that the code specifically allows deliveries in that area up until eleven AM. So silly me, I just didn't know that that was actually part of the code and that was allowed, so, I think Denise, tomorrow or the next day?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. We're having an internal discussion, trying to figure out some proposals to bring back to you to consider, and maybe it's only allowing a certain, a number of vehicles at a certain time, maybe it's restriping, maybe it's all of the above, but the current process now is such that if you're down there before eleven, it's allowed, and, and so that's why we have fifty delivery trucks show up, and it's horrible, and you can't get an emergency vehicle in there, and it's just a free-for-all.
Yeah.
And, and it's not good for the visitor experience either, 'cause, you know, I realize these are, these are deliveries that service our visitors, but it ends up, you know, people come into town, they're like, whoa, what the hell, there's.
It's kinda, it is kinda overwhelming, but the, the rental cars being kept out of there, that's a big thing, because that was one of the main reasons why we wanted to do it. If we could just, might, maybe somehow have all the delivery vehicles park on one side of the street, but when they totally block a street off, that's, that's pretty bad.
Yeah, what they're doing is they're pulling off onto the sidewalk now, and all the people are walking into the street, coming up, because they're pulling over, so people that don't block the street, so they're blocking off the sidewalk instead. I'm talking mainly like Catalina Street.
Oh, right.
Right there, and, and like Ben was saying, between those certain hours, and if you start making loading and loading zones back further where people have to take stuff, then you're eliminating parking down the street, so, I don't know, it's like Ben says, it's not gonna be an easy fix.
We're gonna probably to come back to you guys with some options, and you can pick the, the least horrible option.
Anyway, it is a, I agree, it is awfully crowded down there.
Would you include the people that are using the streets now, the flying boats and Catalina beverage, and those guys in advance of your coming back to us? Get their input and bounce what your ideas are off of them, so that they.
And, and code is gonna be part of this discussion, and code is in conversation with these guys every day, so they know, Art and Miguel know the whole rundown.
So, so, these are all wonderful, and now it makes me feel guilty for all the other little stuff that we have, that's really not little stuff, that we're still gonna be bugging y'all with. You know, it's not like, there's eleven, so you can't come see me with, because you wanna talk about something else, I feel.
We fully expect that, you know, and, and we will hopefully knock some of these off along the way, and we will, and, and there'll be things that come up that we decide, hey, this is really important, we need to make this a new goal. It's a living process.
None of these are short-term. None of these are anything that could be pulled out in a couple of months. These are all.
Hmm, gas dock, maybe in a couple of months.
What?
Gas dock.
What?
The gas dock.
We didn't put that one in here.
I know, that'll be the next one.
But it could. But, but, I guess one other thing, and talking about land and all that, and, and this is not a smart goal, I mean, it's, it's an intelligent goal, but it's not a smart goal, or maybe it's not even intelligent, of.
It's quite a wind-up.
Okay, wow. Okay, getting, getting the stakeholders together to say, what about our community? You know, I mean, it's, it's, if everybody knew what everybody's goals were, then me, how do we sit, is it impossible in this small town to sit down with the map and go, what are we doing here, folks? And, I mean, just, I think that's really frustrating, 'cause, because, okay, like the swimming pool and community center, well, we haven't heard back from that, or this or that, or, in, it's frustra, and, and to say, okay, really do, what does everybody want? What do you really want from this city? What does a city really want? Maybe as we outline our goals, but it, it's frustrating, in this small town of four thousand people, we can't rally to make the community a wonderful whole community, and I don't know how we do that, how you stop, people stop playing games and politicize, and, and, you know, we don't wanna talk about this because we may wanna work out that, that is just bogus.
I can tell you, I think that by doing this exercise, you're gonna be partway there, because we're gonna be able to say, hey, you know, Conservancy, hey, Island Company, hey, Edison, these are our goals, we, what are yours? We'd like to, because there will be some co-centric circles, and there will be some that are completely, we're not on the same page, and that's okay, and then that way we can focus on those commonalities.
Right, but then some of the, like, infrastructure, I guess we've really gotta figure out ways that, and sadly, we've missed a lot of opportunity with recent building, but infrastructure stuff and development fees and all that, it feels like now we're kind of riding on that, we're at the other end of the wave, and there's not as much opportunity in the future to obtain what we might have been able to have received in the past had we, this kind of stuff been together, I don't know, it's just a frustration.
Sure you do.
I know.
That's a good point.
And I also wanna say that public safety, fire in the Sheriff's Department, right now you are off the hook. We haven't come up with anything.
Wait till we get to transportation.
Okay. Every other department's kind of been acknowledged as part, I mean, they all are part of the whole overall plan, but, but, no, it's nice, those operations are running smoothly, we don't have big issues with those right now, which is really nice, you know, it's a good thing.
That is refreshing.
Yeah.
It's been years.
So when we wanna say what's not needed, needing to be tweaked right now, I think we've got three departments that, that are doing just fine.
I also wanted to point out that on our brainstorming session, item number twelve was, was the comprehensive contract review, and that is drafted and almost ready for distribution, so I wanna say that I feel like we've almost completed one of the goals already.
Yeah.
And I feel really good about the drafts that I've seen so far.
Great.
Okay.
You know what we didn't discuss was the community garden, and it's an easy one from my point of view, but I, I'm not sure how interested people would be to do it. I, I know we had some feedback, and it was pretty, actually pretty strong, too, and, and it's something that's really like short-term and attainable, because we've got this plot of land back here, which we've all kind of hashed out before, which, if we had people interested enough, and they would want to put up the money to, or to help us maybe match our funds, to put up a couple plots back there, and maybe they could bring their, their own water from their own allocations at home, and, you know, I mean, because this is in the middle of a drought, but it depends how, how interested somebody actually is in having a garden. I mean, I know if I didn't have an area in my yard, I would certainly be on this, but I think it's something that's, that I'd like to hear from the public, actually, to see what, who, who would like to step up and have a piece of that.
And that can all come under that whole community services recreation thing.
There you go.
'Cause they'd say, that, that should be part of, part of that department, I would think.
That's a good idea.
That could also come under, number, this is a stretch, but number twenty-two, to identify waste-related energy sources, I mean, there's, there's eventually, you know, with some of the options with, with our trash, and producing energy out of our trash could also produce farmable land, too.
Yeah, that's, that's absolutely.
Take your stretch, but that's good.
I'm not sure how many people would wanna go farm the land, but, you know, it's, it's something to look forward to.
Yeah.
Well, composting is how you get your best fertilizer, so, yeah, that's, that's a great point.
And then the last thing I'm gonna say from, from my end, just administratively, this is gonna help us when we are preparing staff report items for you, we're, we're gonna hope that the staff reports align with one of your goals, and if they don't, we're gonna call that to your attention, because maybe it's fine that it doesn't align with a goal, maybe it's a one-off thing that you just do, and that's just part of local government, or maybe you're doing something that we would wanna say, hey, is this really something that, do you, do you guys think this is important? Yes or no? You didn't identify this as a goal, but here we are doing it, so we will be doing that to you during the year, just to.
Right.
Show that connection, or lack thereof.
You know, in keeping what the mayor was saying, Vision 2020 expires in six years. There's a time to, working with the chamber and the company to work on Vision 2030 or 2040, to update the vision for the community.
Did you, I've been reading that sucker.
I spent, I was at every one of those freaking meetings.
What, what color group were you in?
I was the.
Purple group?
No, I was not a participant, I was just there.
It is amazing, but, and I have heard about the, the first three, housing, I think housing was one, one of, number one or two, number three was congestion and noise, and one was water, number one was water, back in two thousand and three.
Yeah.
So, and here we are again, same thing.
Well, I think there's something to be said for, there were, there's all been a lot of studies, a lot of groups that have formed, Vision 2020 is specifically one group, and unfortunately, in the past, we have these great ideas of people to go out and produce studies and do reports and have task force and this and that, but yet, they do all this work and nothing happens from it. So I think bringing up the Vision 2020 is valuable, because that group spent a lot of time and effort in putting that together, and it really just sat stagnant, so.
I don't think it sat stagnant, I think the Planning Commission was gonna try to incorporate that, I know the chamber was trying to incorporate it, I know the company was trying to incorporate the pieces in it to make sure they meshed, and I think it, because that was a very unique group of individuals that got together and played, and it was, it was like a six-month process, process, and it did probably one of the one times that we've had all of the players in the same room talking about the same stuff.
It was a huge group of you.
It was a huge group.
Huge group, it was ama, yeah.
And I think if it's, there's some valuable time, there's some of the stuff, I think all the stuff is still valid for the most part, we just have to possibly update a little bit of it.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, but just real quick, is there anything in the planning commission area, like updating codes, or, or does that happen through the planning commission, looking at, what's that big grin on your face?
You mean, is it a goal to update our, our zoning here, or our, just?
I don't know, just everything the planning commission looks at, like, like I know, you know, when you look at development standards, maybe we've changed, like, wanting to go more green, or, or whatever, is that something that is done via the planning commission, or?
Should be.
'Cause I would like to see some of that looked at and updated.
I would like to very fairly say that since Scott Campbell has come on board, he has brought to the attention of the planning commission a barrage of ordinances that we have looked at, have updated, and there are many, many more, but I, I will attribute a lot of what the planning commission has done over the last couple of years to Scott bringing it to our attention, and, you know, we really need to look at this and need to look at that, so I, I would have to say we've, we have spent some time, and it's ongoing, but there isn't a formal plan to look at every piece of it, that I know of.
That'll kick back to us when we go to amend the LCP. Coastal do that for us.
Yeah.
I don't know what you mean when you say that, help me out.
Part of, part of the general plan amendment is we have to, when we expanded, when we annexed some areas out of Pebble Beach and up the canyon, they were covered under the island's local coastal development permit, and when we annexed the area, it wasn't covered under our local coastal plan, so it kind of fell into the bailiwick of the Coastal Commission. And part of the general plan revision is, is a amendment to the local coastal plan to extend our zoning to the areas that we annexed, and some zone of influences, and